Let's go ahead and get ready to get started. Section three focuses on the words, "My God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me?" So we're going to talk a little bit about those words this evening. But before we begin, let's have a word of prayer. Any special prayer requests tonight?
I have a friend who said his last hour related to Moses.
God bless him.
Great part of Harold and Bonnie.
Continue to remember Harold and Bonnie. Others this evening? Facebook, if you've got requests, or do we have any?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the day and your many blessings. This beautiful Lord's day just give us a really happy time to love the sunshine today. And a wonderful service this morning. Father, we do pray for Harold and Bonnie, just Bonnie getting the word that she's going into the nursing home sometime this week, and she's gonna be devastated. And Harold, Harold is a long footed father, and he's got heart problems, and they can't fix it. Just be with Harold. He's bewildered, not knowing what to do. Just be with us as we go through the study tonight, Father, and open our eyes. Just give us, open our hearts, and give us your learning. Jesus, amen.
Amen. Could it be that that cord's too long? That shouldn't matter, should it? That's twice, that's twice that I've had to unplug from the cord to get back on. That's what I had to do this morning. I had to unplug this. As I say, because the port in this computer.
Is the little clip broke off at the end of that?
Yeah, the clip is broke off on the cord. I was gonna let Dale go ahead and make his pitch for MacBook since I was having so much trouble with the Hewlett Pack. I was gonna let Dale make his pitch.
He did.
Oh, did he? Oh, he, oh, he made this pitch for MacBook? Somehow I didn't figure he missed that chance. All right, folks, let's, we'll start off this evening with watching Miss Susan Locke. Let me get this up out of the way. Move that out of the way, and... Oh, come on.
I know we've all heard the term "God forsaken." We've all probably, it sometimes in our lives felt as if God had forgotten of us, that God was not present. And I don't know if you even felt that way, but I know I have. I grew up, what I would describe as a daddy's girl. I had this incredible dad who really just showed all of us in our family unconditional love. He was doting, he was always there to listen and to help. And a few years ago, several years ago, actually, he was, had a disease that we knew he would not recover from, we knew that it would take his life. And through that time, I remember praying that one beginning that he would be healed, and he wasn't. I prayed that his suffering would be limited, or that he wouldn't suffer, and he did. And then toward the end of his life, I prayed that God would take him, and it seemed as if his suffering would just continue and continue and continue. And so one day, I had one of those sort of fist shaking conversations with God. I was angry, and I felt totally forsaken by God. I felt God had forsaken our family and my father. I had one of those conversations that we read about in the Psalms, that we don't think that we will ever be one of those people. And so one day, I really, I just said to God, I said, "God, gosh, I don't know what's going on here. We've prayed for God to be healed, and he hasn't. We prayed that he wouldn't suffer, and he hasn't. We prayed for you to take his life so that his suffering will end, and he lingers and lingers and lingers." And then I said something to God, and I said, "God," I said, "do you even breathe in there? Do you hear us? Do you care? Do you answer our prayers?" And then I said, I said, "God, I would love an answer, but I don't really expect one." And in that moment, I grabbed my Bible, and I was headed off to the gym to work out. I got to the gym, and I got on the Stairmaster, and as I was going along, I opened up my Bible, and out of it floated this page, and it just kind of, as it was floating down from the Stairmaster, I reached down to try to catch this page before it hit the ground. And it was a devotional. It had been a page I had torn out of the upper room. I'd been at that a year before. And as I looked down at it, it became the answer to my prayer. Because in it was a verse from Isaiah. It says, "Sing for joy, O heavens; exalt, O earth; break forth, O mountains, into singing; for God has remembered these people." God has shown compassion on these people. But Zion says, "My God has forgotten me. My God has forsaken me." And God says, "Can a mother forget her nursing child, or show no compassion for the child of her womb? Even these forget. Yet I will not forget you. See, I have inscribed you on the palms of my hands." And in that moment, and reading that verse, I realized that was the answer to my prayer. And I felt in that moment God's love and mercy and care and compassion flowing down, and I knew that God heard our cries, and that God answered our prayers, and that God cared for my father, and that God would take care of my father. And in the days and the weeks to come, it's as if God's presence was everywhere in that moment, and I knew that my dad was not God forsaken, and neither was I. He was truly an incredible man. We are not the only ones to feel as if we are sometimes God forsaken, that God has somehow turned God's back on us, or that God doesn't hear our prayers or our cries. Jesus felt that way, too. So in Matthew and Mark's Gospels, Jesus only says one thing. He cries out in a loud voice, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" Even Jesus feels in this moment as if God has turned God's back on him. And yet, Jesus knows in his own heart that even though he feels forsaken by God, that he isn't forsaken by God. The wonderful thing about Jesus saying this on the cross, admitting this, that even in his absolute darkest moment, he feels as if he is God forsaken. The wonderful thing about that is that because it gives us permission to be able to be honest with God, he gives us the permission to know sometimes it's okay if we feel that way, too. Matthew and Mark's Gospel depicts Jesus's words, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" In his own native tongue, in Aramaic. Eloi, eloi, lomak, sabak, bani. Why in other places do we hear much Aramae from Jesus? And I think it's important that these writers included this here. There's a great reason for that, and that is because they want us, as we stand around the cross and we listen to these words, that we realize that we are hearing the intimacy of the actual words that Jesus prays out loud to God. These words draw us into the intimacy of our relationship with Christ, as we hear him speak in his own language, in his own tongue, and cry out to God, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" What is interesting about these words of Jesus on the cross, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" Is that they actually come from a song. They're a prayer that Jesus cries out to God, and it comes from Psalm 22. So here are these words. "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" What is interesting about this is that if Jesus had kept going, he would also say words that we sometimes want to say out loud. "Why are you so far from helping me? From the words of my groaning? Oh, my God, I cry by day that you do not answer me, and by night, but find no rest." Jesus would have known the song backward and forward. He would have sung it when he went to synagogue. They would have sent this song around the dinner table. He knows he really isn't abandoned, because he knows what comes next in the song. This is really the song of trust. He says, the Psalm says these words, Jesus knows these words. "Yet you are holy, enthroned on the praises of Israel. In you our ancestors trusted; they trusted, and you delivered them. To you they cried and were saved; in you they trusted and were not but to shame." Jesus's words from the cross reflect more from Psalm 22. "To all who see me mock me; they make mounds of me; they shake their heads. Commit your cause to the Lord; let him deliver; let him rescue the one whom he delights." These are close to the same words that the mockers offer to Jesus, as they surround him on the cross. But here is the beautiful part of the song that Jesus knows. "On you I was cast from my birth, and since my mother bore me, you have been my God. Do not be far from me, for trouble is near and there is no one to help." Jesus knows the rest of the words. If Jesus had had the strength to keep talking, to keep saying the rest of the song, to keep singing, others might have joined in in these words. "For he did not despise or abhor the affliction of the afflicted; he did not hide his face from me, but he heard when I cried to him." Jesus knows and trusts that God hears his words and his cries. He knows that God is actually there. Jesus knows the entire song, just like he knows the entire arc of history, and he knows the entire arc of your life and my life. He knows the darkness that we have there, and these words are spoken as words not of defeat, but words of victory, that we can go to and claim in our own darkest moments. Listen to the rest of the song. "All the ends of the earth shall remember and turn to the Lord, and all the families of the nations shall worship before him; for dominion belongs to the Lord, and he rules over the nations. To him indeed shall all who sleep in the earth bow down; before him shall thou all who go down to the dust. And I shall live for him." Future generations will be told about the Lord and proclaim his deliverance to a people yet unborn, saying that he has done it. Jesus knows the end of the story. He knows that God is with him, even though he doesn't feel it, and he trusts that he will be delivered, and all the ends of the earth know that he has come, and he has delivered them.
Let me ask you a question. I'm kind of curious who... How many of you have a, how many of you have ever felt like you were God forsaken? That God had forgiven you? That, that's willing to maybe share your story, that you've had a point or a time or a place in your life where you really felt like God just left you? Anyone? Go ahead, Beth.
Well, this is a different answer to your question.
Okay. You have to talk up a little bit, so those that are on Zoom and stuff can hear you.
I have never felt that God has forsaken me.
Okay.
But I'm sure anyone that can hear my voice has had family, friends, lots of people forsaken them. But I have never felt that way.
Really?
And I have lost close friends, and I have lost relatives.
Anyone on Zoom that, that you've ever been, found yourself in a place of where you felt like you, that God had forsaken you, that, that you were all alone?
I felt like he wasn't listening to you.
Felt like he wasn't listening to you? And that's what she's saying, that when her father was so sick that he wasn't listening? How many of you have ever been mad at God? Anybody ever been mad at God? I have. I gotta tell you, I've had some, I've had a couple of less than pleasant conversations with God in my lifetime. Several times, I was kind of like the psalmist, and I took my fist, and I shook it at the heavens, and I'm like, "All right, God, I'm, I'm done. I'm out. I'm finished with you. I want nothing else to do with you." When I was sixteen, well, actually, originally, when I was fifteen, my father went through a very difficult time in the church, and I saw church, good church people behaving horribly. I mean, just nothing Christian about their behavior or their attitude. Bite, biting, stabbing in the back, and we lived in Kentucky at the time. It was a church town in Kentucky. And, and I remember when my father, because at the time I was spending the summer with my grandparents, and my father came up to see me, and he said, "We're gonna be moving to Georgia." And, and he said, "You know, I've left the church because of what's going on." And I remember going to my grandparents' house that night and telling God, "All right, I'm done with you. If this is what Christianity looks like, I want no part of this." And I walked away and stayed away until, matter of fact, the next time I was in a church, I guess, is when Sherry and I got married. And then I was gone for another year or two after that, because I just, I was so disillusioned by the church, and I was mad at God. Why would God allow this to happen? But, you know, we hear people say, "Well, you're not supposed to get mad at God. You're not supposed to be mad at God. You shouldn't raise your, your voice to God. You shouldn't get angry with God." Tell you, would you look up Elijah 19, verses one through five? Yeah, I'm sorry, First Kings 19, First Kings 19, one through five. It's about Elijah. And if somebody else would go ahead and look up, Hilda, if you would, go ahead and look up Psalms 22 for us.
What was it, First Kings 22?
First Kings 19. Starting at verse one, First Kings 19, one through five. If you would, go ahead and read that for us.
Now, Ahab told Jezebel all that Elijah had done, and how he had killed all the prophets with the sword. Then Jezebel sent a messenger to Elijah, saying, "So may the gods do to me, and even more, if I do not make your life as the life of one of them by tomorrow about this time." And he was afraid, and arose, and ran for his life, and came to Veer Shiva, which belongs to Judah, and left his servant there. But he himself was a day's journey into the wilderness, and came and sat down under a juniper tree, and he requested for himself that he might die, and said, "It is enough, it is enough now, O Lord, take my life, for I am not better than my father's." He lay down and slept under a juniper tree, and behold, there was an angel touching him, and he said to him, "Arise and eat."
Now, folks, this is Elijah. This is one of the greatest, most powerful prophets in all of the scriptures, who is going to God, saying, "That's it, God, I'm done."
I've always been very confused about that scripture.
Why is that?
Because, because all the things that God had done through Elijah, he showed himself strong, burning the water that was on his altar.
Sure.
I, I, I often wondered, "How, how come Elijah is chickenin' out?"
Because Elijah's done.
And, and he was, he was, whining over that stupid woman.
Because Elijah, because literally... I, I, I'm not gonna comment on the stupid woman. We'll leave that one alone. Because literally, yeah, well, she was. Literally, Elijah's done. He literally, he's done everything God has asked him to do. He's, he's prophesied for God. He's done all these amazing, wonderful things for God. And as you said, he's seen this great miracle of the, Jezebel's face couldn't light through fire, and, and God completely consumed his. And what is, what does he get in return for that? Jezebel wants his life. And I think Elijah feels like he, I'll be honest, he feels like God's left him. He says, "God, I'm done. I've had it. I've done everything you've asked me to do, and for all the stuff I've done for you, what I get in return is, I'm gonna die. I'm done. That's it, God, I'm done." Elijah literally is, he's just that upset with God. You know, in the years that I've been in the ministry, I can't tell you how many times I've heard somebody say, "You should never be mad at God." Y'all ever heard that? Somebody ever told you, "You should never be mad at God"?
Well, Moses got mad at him.
Okay, Moses got mad at him? We know Elijah did, because we just heard it.
Job argued with him.
Job argued with him? Anybody else?
Abraham.
Abraham argued with him. Several times, Abraham. I tell you what, Abraham was not happy about what God was gonna do to Sodom and Gomorrah, because that's where his, that's where his nephew lived.
Jacob wrestled with him.
Jacob wrestled with him, and in return, the angel struck his hip.
Yep. Crippled.
Who else?
David.
David argued with him.
Oh, yeah.
David had, David had some issues with God. Let me tell you, when David was on the run from God, David had some real issues with God.
God had issues with David, too.
Say that again?
God had issues with David, too.
Well, God had plenty of reasons to have issues with David. David was less than holy, shall we say, sometimes. But, folks, when you look at the entire, most of the book of Psalms, the author's got an issue with God. I, in, in this 22nd Psalms, I want you to know, there is some real expression of anger in the opening of the 22nd of Psalms, to the point that the writer who, you know, David is credited with writing the Psalms, the writer of the 22nd Psalms literally says, what does verse two say again, Hilda? Read it.
Verse 10.
Yeah, 22, two, please.
"I, God, I cry out by day, but you do not answer; by night, I find no rest."
"I cry out by day, you do not answer; by night, I can't find rest." Folks, this is not a happy camper that's writing this songs. This is someone who's upset, who's, who's got a real issue with God.
No, I, I think it's perfectly okay to admit it, God.
You know, last Sunday, I talked about the fact that, that God had given us a chance to witness to a young lady, and, and she was telling me about everything that had gone on in her life. And she said, "You know, I've just kind of gotten away from God, because I don't..." She said, "I, I know," and she literally said, "I know I shouldn't be mad at God, but I, I'm, I just don't know what to believe." And I said, "Well, why can't you be angry at God?" And she said, "My grandmother always told me, 'You can't be angry at God.'" And I told her, I said, "I promise you, God's a big boy. God can handle this." You know, sometimes I think that we want to treat God with these kid gloves, and, and that when we're angry, when we're upset, when we don't know something, when we're unsure about something, we, we almost back off. It's almost like we cower in front of God. "I can't be mad, I can't be angry, I can't question God." Well, folks, if we can't question God, then there's a lot of people in the, in the Old Testament and the New Testament both, that are in trouble, because they had some real questions for God. They had some real issues with God.
It's part of a relationship you have with God to be able to actually have a conversation with Him.
Exactly. You know, anytime you're in a relationship, and, you know, whether it's your best friend, or whether it's your spouse, or whoever it may be, I suspect at some point you've had a disagreement about something, and the disagreement may have even got loud. Disagreement may have even got intense a time or two. And yet, it didn't change the fact that you still loved them, that when the disagreement was over, you still loved them, and they were still special, and you still honored them, right? So where do we get this notion that, you know, we're almost afraid of expressing these raw expressions, these, this anger, this questioning, this issues with God? I'm not sure where that ever came about, but it is in biblical.
It's not even real.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, Dale. It's not even real.
And you know what?
Yes, ma'am.
God knows what you're thinking.
Well, and that's the other thing, God knows what you're thinking.
He wants you to be, he wants you to be real with Him, so he can get real with you.
Right.
And you know, he knows, well, you not have to do God.
Whether you express it or not, God already knows your heart.
That's really difficult.
It is. I'd as well say it. Why not? Because God knows your heart, so the moment you get angry at God, and you're sitting there saying, "I shouldn't be angry at God, I shouldn't be angry at God, I shouldn't be angry at God." God's going, "Yes, but you're angry at me, and I know it." You might as well talk it out and get it over with. You know, I know when, when my father, when my father died, he was only 48 years old. It was Easter weekend. It was reading week at seminary. The week before finals in seminary, you get an entire week with no classes to prepare for your exams, because most of our exams, and I don't know about other programs, but in the seminary for our masters, most of our exams were anywhere from three to five hours long. Some of them were written, and others were verbal, and, and others were research papers. So we had an entire week that we were able to study. And out of all the times for my father to have a heart attack, he had it at the beginning of reading week. So I spent reading week at Augusta Hospital with my father in ICU, with my mother and my sisters, and, and sitting there thinking, "I have got to get back to seminary, I have got to take all these tests." And I actually ended up withdrawing from about two of my classes, because I simply could not get everything done. And while I was in the hospital, I was mad at God. I'll tell you, I was angry at God. My father was one of the best pastors, one of the best preachers I have ever seen. If I grow up to be half the man my dad was, I'll be happy. He was an amazing pastor and preacher. Every church he ever pastored just grew by leaps and bounds. I had no clue how many people he baptized in his lifetime, and I'm sitting here thinking, "Why, out of all the people that could die, why him?" Of course, that sounds like a wonderful thing to say, doesn't it? Well, you know, if you're gonna kill somebody, kill somebody other than somebody I love. That's a great thing to say to God, isn't it? But haven't we thought that before? Haven't we looked at God and said, "Why him? Why him?" Well, if not them, go back alive him. Anyway, so you know, God already knows what's in our heart. God already knows what we're thinking, so why pretend? Why, why pretend that everything's okay and that everything's fine, when we know that it isn't? Why not be, why can't we just go to God and say, "You know what, God? I've got some real issues with you. And I need to talk this out." Because God already knows. You know, the other thing is, you know, God can, how do we consistently refer to God? Other than God, what's, what's one of the most familiar names we use for God?
Father.
Father.
Lord.
Did you ever get mad at your father? Anybody here ever get mad at the father?
Yesterday.
Well, I got an answer, didn't I? Nobody got mad at God, but everybody's got mad at the father. All right, so when you got mad at your father, did your father disown you?
No, thank goodness.
No? Did he punish you just for being mad?
No.
Did he still love you? So stop and think about what we're saying here. If we believe that our earthly father can get mad at us and still love us and still care about us, then are we not saying then evidently that our earthly fathers must be stronger, more powerful, more loving, more caring than God? If I can't, ah, but I can get mad at my earthly father, and my earthly father, he'll get over it. He and I got mad at each other all the time. When he passed away, we were roommates. My father and I went to seminary together. First time in the school's history that the son was a year ahead of the father. Dad was a freshman, I was a junior. I was dad's counselor. I loved it. First time in my life, I got to be his counselor. You know, when he died, I was mad. Yes, yes, sir. And what, Dale?
The main thing is, my earthly father didn't know when I was mad, but he couldn't read my heart.
That's a good point. He didn't always know you were mad at him, did he? But he's... But, you know, he still loved us. So if our earthly father can handle us getting angry at him, then why can't God? And that's what, you know, that's what so much of the Psalms is about, you know? Where we ever got this notion that, walking down the road one day, and my mother's as bad as anybody, we're walking down the road one day, and she said something about being, being mad at God, and this was, this was before the funeral, and I said, "Well, I'm mad at God." And God, my mother looked at me, and she said, "Don't you be mad at God. You can't be mad at God." And I told her, I said, "Quit being a Baptist, please. We're not Baptist anymore." You know, I was being, I apologized to the Baptist in the room. I'm a Welsh. We'll talk about my Baptist upbringing some other time. But, you know, and I looked at her, and I said, "So why can't I be angry at God?" And she said, "Because it's not, because God's will is perfect, and it's, if you're mad at God, you're mad at God's will." Well, if that was his will, then yes, I was mad at him.
I'm not perfect.
My mother and I tend to not discuss religion very deep, because we're very different. My mother and I tend to not discuss religion very deep because we're very different. My mother is lovely, and I thank the world of her, but my mother is, she's not a redhead, she's got a winged hair. And she has the temper and the attitude to match. So we don't always discuss religion. But it's really funny, because most of the psalms you hear, my mother has already heard them and approved them before you ever hear them, so we do talk a lot about psalms, but, you know, she just really had this thought of, you can't be mad at God. And I told her, I said, well, I got mad at my, I got mad at dad several times. He and I lived together. You better believe we got ill at each other sometimes. There were things we didn't agree about on theology. We got upset with each other several times. And you know what? When we went to bed, we were still father and son, and more than that, we were best friends. Got up the next morning, and every single morning, I screamed at my father and threw something at the door. My father was a morning person, who got up at 5:00 AM every morning, and the first thing he did was take a shower. And he sang in the shower. And my father couldn't carry it, too. I loved my dad, but my dad couldn't carry it, too. Every morning at 5:00 AM, I woke up to him singing, and I throw something at the bathroom door and tell him, just shut up for five minutes while he sleep. It's okay to get angry at God. Now, let's take, Laura, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, as far as being angry with God, I've internalized. And I think that it's a failure on my part, that a lack of understanding, or maybe a lack of faith. And so I kind of punish myself rather than toward my anger.
And I wouldn't even say that the fact that you internalize is a lack of faith, it's just the way that some of, you know, some of us, when we get angry, we just kind of hold it in and push it down. But the reality is, God knows it anyway, so you might as well go ahead and talk it out.
But I don't feel mad at him. I just feel like stupid little baby.
Oh, you kind of hold it against yourself. And I suspect there are probably times when something goes wrong, and we wonder, what did I do? I mean, has anything ever gone really wrong, and you looked up and said, God, what did I do to make this happen? Yeah. What did I do to deserve this? Ever done that?
I would never think that I am worthy enough to be angry with God. In all honesty, for me to be worthy to be angry at God, I am like a speck of nothingness, and so, forget it.
No, and that's a good point.
I mean, and there's things that I question, I say, why? Like, my mom died at 55 of cancer. My brother died last year at 45. I'm like, and I know that they did things in their life that caused their health to be the way they were. And I, like you say, why not somebody else? I can think of a lot of not nice people. That are sitting in prison, that hurt other people, that why don't they, why didn't they die? This is somebody that you love and care, and that had worth to me in this world. And you've got other people that are in this world that have, to me, very little worth. And so I question that as far as, I don't understand why God, why things happen, but I understand free will, and that we make choices, and a lot of times, choices are the result, and that's what happens in the end.
Sometimes our choices lead to what happens to us, usually do.
But, I mean, to be angry with him, no, I would, I wonder, I have a lot of questions. But I'm not gonna be angry with somebody who's far more greater than I could ever.
But our blessings outweigh any.
The what?
Our blessings outweigh any of the bad.
Oh, sure, blessings do, but then again, you know, if I look at my dad, my father did a lot more for me than he ever did against me, and I still got angry at him. My father was, you know, four more times that he blessed me than he made me angry, but I still got angry. I still got mad at him. And, you know, and we still recovered. There were times when I, you know, once I got angry, and I got mad, and I was done with it, you know, I recovered and went right back. You know, the whole deal when I was 16, I stayed angry at God for about four, five years, something like that. And through different things that happened, God called me back. And I answered that call. I came back. But there were a few years there that, nah, I was done.
I don't see the, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me, Jesus being mad at his father?
We're gonna go there in just a moment. Let me find out what Susan said. The next place we're gonna go is, my God, my God. Bass, I'm sorry. Well, if you take Susan off your Facebook page.
I do that because I volunteer in the court system, and I know.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Anyway, what I was gonna say is that, okay, let's take that court situation that y'all, about our praise and a blessing to us, and. I'm not, I'm in agreement with you guys right here, because I'm not angry at God about her and what she has done.
Right.
She, I, I know for a fact that she's godless.
Yeah.
You know, and she's just, and I can't control her. And, I mean, God can do whatever He wants to, but I just, I, I don't know, I just can't blame him.
But you have, but you also have to remember that when, you know, the advantage that we have with those that are on Zoom, and I'm assuming on Facebook, and and here in this room as well, because of our faith, we tend to not get angry at God because we understand more about God. But someone who's not met God, someone who doesn't have a relationship with God, and you begin to tell them all these wonderful things God has done, and they've lost a mom, and a couple months later, they lost a dad, and they lost this, and they lost that, they lost their job, they lost their house, they lost their family. You know, when you begin to pile all of that on, then we have to come at this from such a place that we're able to look at people, and instead of saying, don't be angry at God, tell them, you know what, it's okay. God's a big boy. God can handle us getting angry at Him. He's got this, cuz He knows you're angry anyway. You might as well tell Him you're angry, cuz He knows it anyway. God, God's got this. God can handle this. But let's talk about that when Jesus says, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? The first thing that I wanna deal with is, understand that when in the days of Jesus, they knew the Psalms, okay? The Bible, the Old Testament was already in place and canonized by the time Jesus is born and begins His ministry. All of that collection has been put together already. Jesus knows the Psalms. But what we have to remember is, Psalms 22 wasn't called Psalms 22. Psalms 22 was called, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? The way you referred to Psalms in first century Palestine is that you referenced the first line. If I wanted to ask someone to recite Psalms 23, in those days, I would not have said, tell me Psalms 23. I would have said, can you recite, "The Lord is my shepherd"? And that's how they would have identified the Psalms. What if, what if on the cross, Jesus doesn't feel forsaken, Jesus doesn't feel angry or mad, what if He's trying to tell the people in front of Him, this is not a bad thing, this is not the end, but rather, this is the beginning of a triumph? Psalms 22 is called the Psalms of Triumph. And each one of the Psalms have different listings. Actually, the Psalms are broke down into five books, and I meant to bring that paper with me tonight, and I forgot to do it. But Psalms 22 is called the Psalms of Triumph, because when you read all of Psalms 22, Hilda, read how Psalms 22, read the last two verses for us, if I remember correctly.
30 to 31.
Yes, ma'am.
Prosperity will serve Him. Future generations will be told about the Lord. They will proclaim His righteousness, declaring to the people, yet ongoing, He has done. He has made it. He's accomplished what He did.
He has made it done. He has accomplished His will. Psalms 22 is the Psalms of Triumph. If I'm standing at the foot of the cross, and Jesus, and Jesus says, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? I don't see that as a bad thing. If I'm John standing there, if I'm one of the priests standing there, now, the Romans may have honestly thought that Jesus was saying He was forsaken. The Romans may have thought that, cuz they would have known the Psalms. But if I'm Mary, if I'm Mary Magdalene, if I'm John, if I'm one of the priests, if I'm one of the people, one of the Jewish people standing there, when Jesus says, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me, my mind goes to the rest of that Psalm. Because this is how I've heard the Psalms all my life. By somebody reciting one line, and then me knowing, this is what the rest of that Psalms is. For years, I've heard teaching, and I've never understood this, even when I was younger. You know, there are different people who teach that, you know, when Jesus said, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? That God turned His back on Jesus because God can't look upon sin. Y'all ever heard that? Tell me how God looks upon us each day, cuz I don't know about you, but I'm sinful. Give me a few minutes. I, you know, I remember years ago, when my father would do communion, one of his favorite things to say is, when you come up here and receive communion, for that moment, when you receive communion and repent of your sins, you are white as snow. You may take two steps and think something ugly about the person sitting beside you, but for at least a moment, you were white as snow. Well, who of us isn't sin? Paul said, for all of sin and fall is short of the glory of God. So does God turn His back on, can God not look upon us because we're sin?
He does.
He does.
He looks on us, and we sin.
Exactly. He looks upon us, and we're sin. So to say, to take this verse of Jesus saying, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? And saying that that is literally Jesus saying, oh, God has denied me, God has turned His back on me. Oh, woe is me, I'm here all alone. Let's go back to the study about Ephesians. Remember what Paul says in Ephesians? That God knew His plan before He even made the cosmos, right? Now, if John says, in the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God, then that means Jesus knew God's plan before the beginning of the cosmos, right? So why would Jesus say God has forsaken Him when Jesus knows what the plan is? Why would He accuse God of forsaking Him?
And He's known the plan since He was born.
And He's known the plan. So why would Jesus accuse God of forsaking Him? Tony says, He sees Jesus, we're clothed with Christ. You're right. He sees Christ in us. Yeah, and I've done this sermon several times. The one thing that I think we forget about God sometimes is that when God looks at us, God doesn't see a short, chubby little guy that's overweight, that's too, that's that's too short and has all of these health issues. God sees the image of Him that is within me. God doesn't see this physical body. God sees that image. We're told in Genesis that we are made in the likeness of God. When God looks at us, you know, Paul says, you're neither slave nor free, Greek nor Jew. Because Paul understood that when God looks at us, God doesn't see a slave or a free man, a Greek or a Jew, doesn't see an American, doesn't see black, doesn't see white, doesn't see male, doesn't see female. When God looks at us, God sees that image that He put in us. Why would He ever turn His back on that?
Kind of along those sidelines. I've always had this thought, that when I stand up and sing in church, that God hears what Connie and Terry and William sounded like this morning. It don't sound like what Sandra's hearing.
I think you're right.
He says, my show of love.
And sometimes, sometimes the noise, but, but once again, that goes back to exactly what I do. This goes back to what our heart is. This goes back to when I'm sitting in the pew, and I'm listening to the ladies sing, or I'm listening to Dale play, or I'm listening to the praise band, I've got one of two ways to approach this, okay? I can either be ill and angry and upset that somebody dragged me to church, and most likely, no matter what you do, I'm not gonna be in a good mood. I gotta tell you one of my favorite jokes. This is this young boy gets up one Sunday morning, and his mom tells him, it's time to go to church, he needs to go to church, and this young man says, no, I don't wanna go to church today. I just don't wanna go. And she said, no, you need to get up and go to church. And he said, but mama, those people don't like me, they fussing me. They hollering me. Those people look at me strange, they don't like me. And she said, you've got to get up and go to church. And he said, give me one reason why I should go to church. And she said, because you're the preacher. Don't we all feel that way sometimes? Don't we have those days where we really, you're almost in the mood where you just wish God would leave you alone for a little while? There's a million and one other things going on, and I really need to concentrate on something else. And you know what? That's okay. That's okay. Because God knows our heart. And there on the cross, when Jesus says, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Please hear this, folks. I don't know where and how this teaching of God turned His back on Jesus because God can't look upon sin, I don't know where that ever started, but folks, that's just not biblical.
That's some humans' logic.
It's almost gotta be, because, you know, look at all the time He spent with Moses. Look at how many times God looked upon Moses. Folks, if anybody ever blew it, Moses blew it more than one time. And God.
He restored Abraham.
Abraham blew it multiple times. David blew it. Job. Yeah, Peter denied him. And what did Jesus say? Go tell my disciples, and Peter, I have risen.
Because on this, upon this rock, I will build my church.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. When He sat upon this rock, what's that rock? What's the rock?
Believe.
I've always thought it was cedar.
What did Peter say, like Jesus said upon this rock?
Thou art the Christ, the Son of God.
Exactly. Thou art the Son, He professed Jesus as the Son of God. Upon this rock, will I build my church?
That makes sense.
And folks, this is Peter. He walked on water. For a moment, and what happened? The thunder came, and the lightning came, and instead of staying focused on Jesus, what did he do? He looked away. Well, how many of us, when we get into the storms of our life, we look away for a moment? I have. I've looked away. And that's usually when we get into the most trouble, and we look back, and what does Jesus do? When we call upon the name of Jesus, He comes, and He picks us up out of the water, and He puts us back in a safe place, and He still loves us. We still know that He is the Son of the living God. This is what Jesus does.
I always liked his retort to Job, when Job was arguing with him. He got mad. He said, where were you when I separated the waters?
Yeah, God, God kind of calls Job down for a moment there. He reminds, where were you when I was doing all this stuff? But He still restored Job, didn't He?
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, Job was his favorite.
He still restored everything Job had. One of the things that it has in here, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what page, well, it says early in Mark's Gospel, "We hear another prayer issued from Jesus' lips, one addressed to God in a more intimate, familiar language. As he kneels in the garden of Gethsemane, contemplating what lies ahead, Jesus prays to His heavenly parent, Abba, Father, for all things are possible, remove this cup from me, yet not what I want, but what you want." Even in the depths of His, of His pain and His suffering, He still surrenders to the outcome of His heavenly Father.
Is it the bottom of page 43?
Thank you, the bottom of page. See what it says, Abba, Father, they.
That's calling.
That's calling him daddy. And you know, I struggle, and you know, I know, I know this makes no sense. I struggle with seeing Jesus call God daddy. I don't know why.
When I first heard that, I thought, wow, that's great.
Yeah, the word Abba is a very intimate, a very familiar name that He literally is saying daddy.
I probably never called my dad father. I called him daddy.
Yeah, I don't know that I, well, there were two, I don't know that I ever called him father, and I never called him by his name.
Goodness.
To this day. And he's been gone 20, 30, some odd year. I still don't call him by name. But I don't know why, but I, for some reason, I just cannot get it in my head. But I, I don't know why, but I, for some reason that I just cannot get it in my head, Jesus calling God daddy. But he's intentional in that language. He, he's intentional in using Abba, because he wants us, he desires us to have that same relationship.
See, I think that implies a, an informal relationship, a love and
It does.
Daddy and boy.
You're exactly right. To call him daddy implies a relationship that, I'm not sure most of us. I, I don't know about you. Anybody who ever called God daddy?
I think I've had the attitude of calling him daddy. I'm not sure.
Ever said that word?
Not sure I ever said Abba.
Yeah.
I don't know that I ever said daddy, but I
You know, I'm, I, I go back to what I said, that I don't know why I have such a mental block, but it's that notion of, I have so much respect for God, that I struggle with that. But you know what? That's okay also, folks.
That's the same thing that Lori was saying about being mad at him.
Right, well, that, exactly. That's the same. Lori, you know, Lori, as you said, you struggle with that notion of being angry at God. I struggle with that notion of being that intimate with God. And the one, that's okay.
Maybe we're remembering in the Old Testament when God told Moses, take your shoes off.
Yeah. Take your shoes off, you're on holy ground. What you doing?
That was not a father-son relationship.
That was not.
When that guy took the army, he died.
But you know what, folks? That's okay. And, and you know, when, when we look at those words of, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? If nothing else, what I would love for people to see out of that is, it's okay to wonder. It's okay to question. It's okay to not understand. But know this, if you've ever heard someone say that God, you know, that, well, that Jesus was crying out because God turned his back, because God can't look upon sin, please, please, please don't ever repeat that. Because when, when you put this verse in the context of which it was spoken, it changes how you look at this. When you realize that in that culture and in that context, they simply use the first line to call to mind the rest of the Psalm. Then you understand that when Jesus said, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Jesus did not feel forsaken. Jesus did not feel like God had turned his back on him. Jesus did not feel like he was alone. Jesus literally was saying, what you think is defeat, what you think is agony, what you think is the end, is only the beginning of a glorious victory for God. And those people standing there at the foot of the cross, that's exactly what they would have heard. Those who knew the Psalms. Yes, the Romans thought he was saying God left him.
They thought he was calling
They thought, they thought he was calling Elijah.
Yeah.
They, they had all of these other thoughts. But for those standing there at the foot of the cross, when he cried that out, I'll guarantee you, their mind went to the rest of that Psalm. As she said in the video, they would have known that Psalm backwards and forwards. That's one of the Psalms, Psalms of Triumph. That's one of the Psalms you memorize. They would have known it backwards and forward. And when Jesus said that, they would have realized what looks like defeat is actually a great victory.
What was that question I was, that went home about? You said, was it because he took on our sins? What, what was that?
Well, because there's, I, I mean, I, I've had people that have said to me that when he cried out, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? That literally believe that God turned his back on Jesus because Jesus took upon our, took upon our sins, and God can't look upon sin. Well, uh, God looked upon a whole lot of sinful people.
I've heard preachers say that.
I, I have too, and that's one of the things my father and I never agree on, because I have heard my father say that.
It would be hard for me to believe that, because in the garden of Gethsemane, he did, he looked down on Jesus, and he sent angels to fortify Jesus. That, he did not abandon Jesus.
Well, go back to, go back to First Kings nineteen, when Elijah's under the bush, and Elijah is, Elijah's upset. He says, God, I'm done. Just kill me and take me home. Does God get mad? No. He sends an angel to wake him up and to tell him, to strengthen him, to go and get something to eat.
Provided the food?
Provide, even provided the food for him. My God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me is not, is not a cry of being forsaken. It is a cry of triumph. And of God saying, what looks like defeat ends up being a great victory. Any questions before we dismiss for the evening?
Robert? Okay. Uh, Jesus had been with God since the beginning. They knew they were, they, they were, Jesus was God. And this, this intimacy, they'd been there.
And God had walked since the very beginning. There's been no separation between them. And they stayed with each other. I go back to Ephesians. You know, Paul said that they were together from the beginning, and that the plan was made before the cosmos was made. Let's bow our heads together. Father God, we thank you so much for the chance to come together for this study this, this evening. We thank you so much for each one that is joining us, Lord God, in whatever form they may be with us. We thank you, Lord, for your coming to earth and forgiving of your life. We thank you, God, for sending your only Son. You never walk away. There are times when you may be disappointed, like any parent is in a child sometimes. But you're always there. And even when we may not understand, continue to walk that path. We hear the words of Paul, for now I am, for now I know partly, but then I shall know fully, as I am fully known. Lord God, until we know fully, let us remember that you fully know us, and that you're always there. For it's in your blessed and holy name that we pray. Amen.